Ladies and gentlemen, Reverend, please stand for the pledge. At this time, I'd like to introduce United States Army Veteran and Lackawanna County Veterans Affairs Daniel Healestone. Dan is a veteran of the United States Army. He served active duty from 2003 to 2004 during Operation Iraq Freedom as Army Specialist E4. Daniel, thank you for your service. Stand right up to the podium and thank you for the great work that you're doing for Lackawanna County.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We just have a moment of silence. We had another shooting at a synagogue this past week and, you know, it's just, it was outrageously horrible what happened, but amazing how people will stand up to evil. Laura Kay, close friend of the rabbi, Rabbi Goldstein, basically got in the way of the rabbi and the shooter at the time. The rabbi did sustain losing a finger from a gunshot, but the brunt of the shots actually went into poor Lori who passed away on the spot. This is something that just shouldn't be going on and this is a house of worship and there should be sacred things that should always be left alone and human life is so precious, it just shouldn't be happening. So, please keep all of these poor people who lost, this poor person who lost her life and her family, Laura Kay's family, in your thoughts and prayers and Reverend Goldstein and his congregation in this time of mourning because we also, we mourn with them. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, May 1st, 2019, 10:00 a.m. meeting of the Commissioners in the Commissioners Conference Room at the Lackawanna County Government Center at 123 Wyoming Avenue. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call?
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Proclamation presentations, 19-0101. Oh, I'm sorry, we just said, we just said that. 19-0101, presentation for Build Up Project. Do we have anyone here from Build Up? Would you like to come up to the podium? Let's talk about what you're doing, all the great stuff that you're doing to uplift the community and citizens and students.
Good morning, everyone. First off, thank you for inviting us to today's Commissioners' Meeting. My name is Judy Dedder. This is Zoe Haggerty. We're here to tell you about our project, hashtag Build Up. Our mission is empowering young people to positively impact others through inspiring and encouraging handwritten messages. Zoe's going to talk a little bit about our backstory.
Good morning. My name is Zoe. We just wanted to tell you a little bit about how we got started and then what we've been doing ever since. So, in May of 2017, my mom, Rebecca Haggerty, and Mrs. Dedder's friend, was diagnosed with an aggressive glioblastoma, which is a form of brain cancer. And unfortunately, about a year later, she passed away. But all throughout her illness and even leading up to the point when she was diagnosed, she would tell me and my family and all of our friends to build people up, don't tear them down. And that was really just her mantra of her entire life, was to build people up. And after she got sick, she had some difficulty expressing herself, so she just shortened that to "Build Up Folks." And Mrs. Dedder and I really took that and ran with it because we thought there's something really important and empowering with that message of building people up. So shortly after her passing, we started this hashtag Build Up Project. We have little blank sticky notes that have stamped on them hashtag Build Up and we write individual, unique messages on each one and place them anonymously around the community. So, my two little sisters, Charlotte and Lily and I, and Mrs. Dedder's two girls, Ally and Zoe, have gone around the community and placed over 2,500 little sticky notes anonymously. And it's just a way for us to kind of further my mom's message and keep her legacy alive.
So, we talked about the school, the classrooms, what you do with the kids. You go in and you'll go and put them on each one of their desks. Talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So, one of our recent projects is we visited the JFK Elementary School and we went into the classrooms after the school day had ended and placed sticky notes on the desks of the children. And so, when they came back on Monday morning, it was a nice little surprise for them to sort of see what was on their desk and a good way to start the day and to start the week. And we actually ended up partnering with this Scranton School District and made the month of April a hashtag Build Up Month. And so, they've been distributed throughout this Scranton School District to teachers and students, which is really hoping to further the impact that Build Up has on the community.
Especially coming into school on Monday, the kids aren't too happy in general and there's a little note on their desk, so that's a plus.
And we also have to thank Tom Hesser Dealerships for partnering with us because to achieve the Scranton School District partnership, they sponsored the purchase of our sticky note pads and we were able to get pads into the hands of 10,000 students within the district. So, for the month of April, they've been encouraged to write their own messages to one another, to the teachers, to family members, as well as people in their neighborhoods and communities.
We'd like to express our condolences. I'm very sorry about the loss of your mother.
Thank you.
My mom passed away seven years ago and there isn't a day that goes by that I don't think of her. But you really took her memory and took it forward, moved it forward. You really did. My mother used to always say, like, when you're in school, try to be nice to the other students. And you know, you're a kid, sometimes you'd be arguing or an issue would come up. And I'd say, "Why is that, Mom?" And she'd say, "Because you don't know what's going on behind that door of their house. School might be the only refuge they actually have, so this might be the best part of their day. So, always try to be nice to everybody and don't put anybody down." But your mother took it so much further, you know? Your mom was in a real scary area of her life, not sure what was going to happen, hoping to live on and, you know, and ended up dying. But she knew that the key to life is to build each other up. Because if you're not building each other up, who can you build up? So, your mom was one heck of a lady, so I wish, I wish we had an opportunity to meet her, but I'm very sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
I'm very sorry for your loss as well and it's a great effort on your part and so proud to have you here to see that you're doing something positive to impact our children in our community. I'm wondering if I should have you come over to the political realm and start doing it there, too, so. But I like the part where you're stating, "Young people seem to be losing the human connection and face-to-face contact we also deeply need." That's true. You know, this statement here, "Post-Snap Hastily." So, that's Snapchat, right? I mean, I'm not that good on the computer, but thank you for what you're doing and hopefully you're opening some eyes of the youth in our community and I'm hoping for a positive change for you. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
And I'm not a fan of texting or social media. I'm more a personal contact-type person and I really think what you're doing is a great idea and a great thought. I didn't know anything about this and I think it's something that needs to continue and it's something that you can probably go into many other school districts and many other places and I think that would be a great goal to have. And if there's anything that we can conceivably do to be helpful there, we would be more than willing to do that. And again, I, you know, I don't text. I listen to texts and I return phone calls. So, I think it's a great thing, you know, go visit in person. I think that's important and I think people need to stay in contact with each other. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My mom used to always say, "There's nothing like a little note, a quick paragraph." Drop a letter to them and remind somebody about what great things they did or just to say, "Hey, I'm thinking about you," that it really, really matters. But how was Mr. Barrett to work with, our Kennedy? He seems to be a big fan.
He is. He's a big fan. He's, I call him our little firecracker because he likes to get things done. He was on board from the very beginning, which we were grateful for, as well as the gentleman from Tom Hesser. We've really been blessed with people who get what we're doing and really have said, "Well, what do you need to make this happen?" And ultimately, our goal really is positive, sustainable change within schools, the community, and even on social media. So, we are plugging along, we're moving forward. We've had interest from some of the local colleges and universities, as well as other schools. So, the plan is to continue and grow.
We're here for you.
Thank you.
We'll be talking about some other things in the near future.
Thank you.
We have a certificate of recognition. The county of the Board of Lackawanna County Commissioners does hereby recognize Build Up in honor of a designation of an individual group providing great works in Lackawanna County, presented by Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner O'Terriani, and Commissioner Cummings on May 1st, 2019. Would you like to come forward?
Congratulations. I appreciate you. Nice to meet you. Yeah. We'll talk now. Yeah, step over and put Zoe right in the middle. That's good. Here we go. Smile. Supple. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Well, that's very inspirational. Thank you, Zoe. Thank you for coming in. Okay. 19-0102, Child Abuse Awareness Month. I was wondering if we could have Marion Laporta come up and say a few words?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, I've known Marion Laporta for quite a few years and they do something that is amazing that a lot of people may not realize because they're not in that situation where they would need this amazing intervention to happen. But the worst thing that could possibly happen to a child and their parents is if they're for some kind of sexual offense or abuse against their child. And years ago, the way it would work is the district attorney might ask questions, the police might ask questions, the hospital ask questions. Marion Laporta and the Children Advocacy, they have one interview, one time, one set of questions, so the healing can begin immediately instead of like four interviews later. And it's drug out and drug out and drug out. And these kids don't need this. They need love, they need affection, they need to be taken home, they need to be hugged, they need to be safe. And Marion does this every day and she makes sure that these kids are as safe as they possibly could be for the hellish moment that they may have lived through. Marion?
Well, I have nothing more to add to that. You took my whole speech.
Well, I'm sure, Marion, you're good. You do a great job and we're very happy to have you here.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. And let me remind everybody that behind the system of intervention that has worked so beautifully to help children who have been sexually and physically abused is the most incredible team. And that team consists of forensic interviewers, MDs and CRNP's, who are the medical assessors, child advocates, trauma therapists. And without this collaboration of professionals, then this job could not get done. In addition, in the larger concentric circle, is a team called the multidisciplinary team. That is comprised of a representative from the DA's office, child protective services caseworker, law enforcement, and again, the CAC team. So, as you said, Patrick, a child comes in and it used to be that the child had to go to all these people and be interviewed. A teacher, a principal, an emergency room practitioner, the DA's office, over to child protective services, and now in one place at one time, that child has the interview and we are able to move forward. The outside team, outer team, continues investigation and prosecution and protection of the child. So, it is a very well-oiled machine. The CAC model is throughout the country. We in Lackawanna County and Northeast Pennsylvania have one of the three models for Pennsylvania and we are very proud of it. But we could not have done this over the past 21 years without this community. The support of the community is absolutely inspiring. And Rebecca Haggerty, as a matter of fact, was one of our most great inspirations. So, I'll have to catch up with Zoe later. We are just so happy to be here and we urge you all, as people in the community, to keep your eyes open, your ears open, your hearts open to the possibility of abuse in a home, in a school, before you, in whatever area or profession you work within. I would like to introduce my team, two of my team members, because we have another case going on. Jennifer Ugliola is the Associate Director and our forensic interviewer, our primary forensic interviewer. And Cheryl Friedman is a CRNP and a PSCANE, which is a professional, a pediatric sexual abuse nurse examiner. And they are two of the really stunning parts of this team dynamic. Are there any questions? Okay. So, remember to keep your eyes and ears open, everybody. Keep your heart open because the statistic is one in every four girls, one in every six boys, before the age of 18 will be abused. And that's not our number. That is the national statistic. Our Moonlight Run will be this Saturday at Naog Park. We've been doing this for well over a decade and we always get a good response from our community. So, please join us. It's supposed to rain a little bit, but you're all tough Scrantonians. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Marion, thank you for everything that you do and thank you for, thank you to your staff that are angels that try to help these children through these horrible times that they have and their parents.
And, you know, Patrick, I do want to end with one hopeful thought. There was a myth that if a child had been abused, that their soul was broken and their life was over. But through research and through our own experiential background, we have realized that children are resilient, but they do need us. They need you, they need you, they need you. They need therapy and very specialized trauma therapy. They need the intervention. They need a medical exam to know that they're okay. They need the therapy to know that it wasn't their fault. So, the good news is with this system, our children can thrive and come back as stronger adults to help the rest of us. Thank you very much.
Great, Marion. Commissioner Cummings?
Marion, I thank you so much for the work that you do and I've met you on numerous occasions, came over for a tour and I do appreciate the time that you did take because I saw how busy you all are, which is unfortunate, but you are busy and I wish you weren't. I hate to say that, but I wish you weren't. I do appreciate your staff that's here. Thank you for the work that you do and it must be heart-wrenching to have to go through this and I'm glad that we have you there to take that role and protect our children and make them better and heal them. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Thanks, Marion, to you and your staff and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to make sure when the new Board of Commissioners came in, and they don't know any longer, but back in 2016, they were to actually see what you do because there's great work being done in Lackawanna County and your office, your home there, home, because it's a home for these children, these teens, they come in, do incredible work.
Thank you.
Whereas the Children Advocacy Center of Northeast Pennsylvania, a private nonprofit charitable organization whose mission is to provide excellence in assessment and treatment of child abuse and neglect, is raising community awareness of child abuse issues throughout the month of April. Whereas the center provides medical assessment and children forensic interviews for victims of abuse and neglect and coordinates a multidisciplinary team response to the child's abuse and neglect in Lackawanna County and the surrounding counties of Northeast Pennsylvania. In addition, the center provides specialized trauma therapy for children advocacy services to children victims of abuse and neglect. Whereas the center urges parents to prevent the exploitation by being aware of whom your children spend time with. Please watch your children. Questioning any money or gift that your child brings home, listen to your child if he or she does not want to do, does not want to be with, with or go with someone else. Encourage open communication with your child, knowing the signs and indicate a child may have been assaulted and believing your child if they say they have been assaulted. Whereas the center seeks to educate the community and recognize the reporting child abuse in order to protect the innocence of our children and make the community safe. And due to the increase in number of victims of the abuse in 2013, the center opened a teen advocacy center to serve the victims of abuses between the ages of 13 and 18. The TAC was the first of its kind in the nation. Now, therefore, we, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry O'Terriani, Lorraine A. Cummings, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do acknowledge and proclaim April 2019 on behalf of 214,000 citizens as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I want to let people know that we weren't able to get someone from the advocacy center in for April and it is May 1st, but this is such a big thing in our community. If you want to give donations, who do you call? Who do you send it to? How's that work, Marion?
You could call me, Marion Laporta, 499-2859.
They're always, they need donations, you know? I mean, this is, there's a large undertaking that they are involved in and it's amazing. It's a two-way mirror. So, there's a very warm person on the other side who talks to the child who is a victim at that point. Ask them the questions instead of having a police officer, an ADA, a medical person, someone who's, this is, can you explain, Marion, what they, how they work it?
Yes. Forensic interviewers are very highly trained professionals. In fact, our forensic interviewers go to at least six trainings, either peer review or actual trainings, for the state-of-the-art on how to question a child in trauma. And as I said, a child used to, if a child came to school and told their trusted teacher, she would have to disclose, or she or he would disclose the trauma to the teacher, then would have to talk to the principal. Then the principal, before mandated reporting laws, had the subjective ability to decide whether or not he or she would call law enforcement and then law enforcement might be called. The law enforcement personnel would have to question the child. And then to an ER where there's intake, where the child's exposed for hours to the public, a child in trauma. And then to the attending physician where he needed, he or she needed details on what the examination should consist of. Back in the police car, down to law enforcement, down to district attorney's office, ADAs would question the child. Across town, child protective services, caseworkers would question the child. The problem was the child's story, one, might become inconsistent, two, the child might retract the whole story because they're in such trauma and they think people don't believe them. And third, perpetrators of children did not get justice, the child didn't get justice from the perpetrator because it was very, very difficult to try child abuse cases because of these continuous interviews. So, as Patrick alluded to, the forensic interview, meaning looking for evidence, which is a very sterile, non-therapeutic interview of a child, which allows the child to give all of the detail without the interviewer inserting or insinuating anything or naming names or talking about the instances. It gives that child a pure journey through the disclosure process. And that's the beauty of a child advocacy center. One roof.
Thank you so much, Marion. We have a proclamation for you. Would you like to come forward?
Thank you so much, Marion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This might clash.
Does this pink clash with Lorraine's red?
Here we go. Smile. Take a supple. One more. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's truly angels' work helping with the healing. Thank you, Marion. 19-0103, presentation of a Guardian Victims Rights Award for Macy's Law for Pennsylvania, presented to Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you.
I think they can come down. That's okay. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Madison Scarfaro from Marcy's Law for Pennsylvania.
Thanks, Madison, for coming in.
Yes, thank you for having us. Marcy's Law is an organization that's working to take the statutory rights that crime victims currently possess in Pennsylvania and elevate them into constitutional rights. So, Marcy's Law is named after a young woman named Marcy who was stalked and killed by her ex-boyfriend in 1983 in California. About a week after her death, her mom and brother were in their local grocery store and the man who murdered her actually approached them and they had no idea that he was released on bail. So, her brother took it-
It was what?
They, their family had no idea that he was released on bail.
Released on bail, wow, usually, okay.
Yep. So, her brother took it upon himself to make sure that this never happened to another family again. So, I'm here today to present Commissioner Cummings with our Guardian of Victims Rights Award. This is the highest award given to individuals that advocate for crime victims and their families and we thank you for all of your support and everything that you do. So, I would like to present the award at this table.
Sure. Jean, come up here and present it.
Wow. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for all of your work.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Can we get a picture?
Absolutely.
Right here.
That's fine.
Can I get one with the other Commissioners?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me come in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can we get a picture?
Yes.
Or right here?
That's fine. Can I get one with the other Commissioners?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me come in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, all the award? Here we go. Good, very good.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, it's so nice.
Oh, well, Commissioner O'Malley, if you can say a few words?
Yeah, I'd like to say, congratulations. My sister was a victim, but he was kept in prison and if somehow it had happened that my parents were out on the street, my family, and he had been out, that would have been a horrifying, horrifying experience after the loss of someone that you care so much about. So, yeah, their family is amazing that they fought to make sure that if somebody murders someone, that they're not getting out on bail.
Right.
And they can't approach that individual and they, you know what I mean, like, they're out of, were they out of the market or something, you said?
Yep, the grocery store.
Yeah.
About a week after her death.
I'm not saying it's a relaxed moment, but you're going through this store. Last thing in this world, you think you're going to be confronted by the individual who took your loved one's life. So, I'd just like to congratulate Commissioner Cummings and I know she's a big advocate for the Women's Resource Center and making sure that our children are safe and secure and loved. So, congratulations, Commissioner. That's a great award.
Thank you. I know, I'm honored. Thank you very much.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Just congratulations, Commissioner Cummings. As usual, you work hard for what you believe in and you've done a great job here and obviously it's been recognized by other people. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. Thank you so much. Thank you, both of you.
Congratulations.
I'm actually a little overwhelmed right now because, you know, this is, this hits home to me as it does to so many others, but can you just tell us, tell the community exactly where you're at now and what you're looking for in the future, what work you've done to get this a constitutional amendment?
Sure. So, to pass a constitutional amendment, you need to pass through two consecutive legislative sessions. So, we passed unanimously in the House and Senate last year. We just passed in the House again on April 8th. Now, we're moving on to the Senate. We need to pass through the Senate and then we'll hopefully be on the ballot this November for all of Pennsylvania to vote on. So, if you want more info-
Can I get one with the other commissioners?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, commissioners, for having me come in. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can you show all the award? Here we go. Good, very good.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, it's so nice. Oh, well, Commissioner O'Malley, if you can say a few words?
Yeah, I'd like to say, congratulations. My sister was a victim, but he was kept in prison, and if somehow it had happened that my parents were out on the street, or my family, and he had been out, that would have been a horrifying, horrifying experience after the loss of someone that you care so much about. So, yeah, their family is amazing that they fought to make sure that if somebody murders someone, that they're not getting out on bail.
Right.
And they can't approach that individual, and they, you know what I mean, like, they're out of the, were they out of the market or something, you said?
Yep, the grocery store.
Yeah.
About a week after her death.
I'm not saying it's a relaxed moment, but you're going through this store, last thing in this world, you think you're going to be confronted by the individual who took your loved one's life. So I'd just like to congratulate Commissioner Cummings, and I know she's a big advocate for the Women's Resource Center, and making sure that our children are safe and, and secure and loved. So congratulations, Commissioner, that's a great award.
Thank you, I know, I'm honored. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Notterianni?
Just congratulations, Commissioner Cummings. As usual, you work hard for what you believe in, and you've done a great job here, and obviously, it's been recognized by other people.
Thank you, I appreciate that comment. Thank you so much. Thank you to both of you.
Congratulations.
I'm actually a little overwhelmed right now, because, you know, this is, this hits home to me as it does to so many others. But can you just tell us, tell the community exactly where you're at now, and what you're looking for in the future, what work you've done to get this a constitutional amendment?
Sure. So to pass a constitutional amendment, you need to pass through two consecutive legislative sessions. So we passed unanimously in the House and Senate last year. We just passed in the House again on April 8th. Now we're moving on to the Senate. We need to pass through the Senate, and then we'll hopefully be on the ballot this November for all of Pennsylvania to vote on. So if you want more information, we have a website. It's marcelslawforpa.com. We also have a Twitter and Facebook that we're very active on. You can see what we're doing around the area. For example, tonight, we'll be at the Great Chefs for Women's Resource Center. We're really excited for that, and we're always going to different events and meeting with different people. So we, we love what we do, and it's very important, so.
Yeah, so I would just, everybody watch out for this, you know, if you, you see anyone in the Senate that, or you go to their offices, please encourage them to make sure that this goes, this passes, and we will have it on the, on our voting ballot in November, this November?
Hopefully, yes.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
Please make sure you reach out to them, your legislatures, and tell them that, to make sure that they vote for this. And, you know, I, I greatly appreciate what you're doing. I don't talk about my story often, everybody knows I have some kind of story out there. But I didn't have, I didn't have the ability, well, it's hard for me to discuss, let me try and do this. As a victim, my perpetrator never was held accountable for what they did, so I know how that family feels. You know, I actually had to leave town to be safe. I had the church that helped me and Women's Resource Center. So I am, I'm always trying to make sure that I support proposals like yours. So I thank you so very much for the work that you've done, and I will make sure that I tell as many people as I know to try and help you in your efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything that you do for victims.
Thank you very much. It's an honor. Thank you.
We can, maybe we can get a letter set up from Joe D'Avenzio's office to send it to our congressman, to let them know that we feel that this is a law that should be passed.
Yeah, that would be great. We would really appreciate that, so.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much again. Thank you.
Thanks, Macy, thanks for coming in.
Thank you for your work.
Need the box.
Thank you so much. What an honor, wow.
Thank you. No, it's beautiful, it's nice.
Isn't that great? That's so nice.
Okay. County Fair update. Armin Elavetti, we're only a couple weeks away, and it's, it's coming.
It is.
Kurt, would you like to come up? Anybody else from the fair? Is that everyone?
Others are hard at work.
Oh, I know, it's, it's 10:00 something in the morning, but you know-
Signated the spokespeople.
But Kurt, actually, it's, the director of the visitor's center absolutely understands that the fair is a great opportunity to drop people in Lackawanna County, and this is a great quality of life event for our citizens, as well as citizens, we're hoping lots from outside, come and enjoy it. Let's talk about the fair.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. I was warned to be brief, so I'm giving you the Reader's Digest condensed version of what we're doing. On behalf of the Fair and Recreation Authority and the Fair Board, I'm pleased to report to you this morning that the inaugural Lackawanna County Heritage Fair will open at noon on Wednesday, March 29 of this year, at Montage Mountain Resort.
May 29.
It will be open daily at noon through Sunday, June 2, 2019. The price of admission is $10 per day for anyone over 2 years old. So children 2 and under will be free. There will be rides that they can ride on, but, you know, because they obviously can't ride on most of them, the board made the decision that children under 2 will be admitted free. The $10 admission price includes parking, unlimited carnival rides, unlimited access to the water park features at Montage, to the chairlifts. The zip line will also be available, but that's an upcharge to Montage. The board decided that the liability issues were too significant for us to be involved in that, but Montage will make the zip line available to people who want to take advantage of it. We'll have entertainment at two performance stages, and a firework show on Saturday night. There will be a variety of food and craft vendors there, we're somewhere in the vicinity of about 100 right now. Various historical and cultural displays and presentations, and a number of contests. We have, I think, a beard contest, a tattoo contest, and I think we have a craft beer contest as well. We have a large number of local entertainers booked for the main performance stage, which is on what we call the upper campus of the fair. That will be the parking area. The lower campus is where the lodge, the ski shop, the water park features are. So we have an upper and a lower campus. Those acts will be performing each day beginning at noon, and with the exception of one or two time slots, we have continuous entertainment from opening to closing every day. And these, again, are local bands. The idea behind the fair is to promote not only our local culture and heritage, but also to use it as a marketing opportunity for the county and for the businesses and professionals who live and work here. So we made a conscious decision to try to include as many local performers as we could. The Fair Board negotiated with Swika Amusements to include the cost of the rides and the price of admission, to keep the costs affordable to families with young children. And anybody who's gone to fairs knows that the, for most of them, the admission price gets you into the fairgrounds, but if you want the rides, you have to, that's an upcharge, you have to pay extra for those, and they can be significant costs.
And how many fairs in Lack, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has a water slide option?
I think we're the only one. I think we're the only one.
And we're the first fair of the year, am I right?
Yes, we're opening the season rather than closing it. And that was, again, a conscious decision by the Fair Board to, you know, use that opportunity to open the summer and promote what's up there on the mountain that's available, you know, the water park features. Hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to work in the pavilion and the baseball stadium as well. The Board wishes to acknowledge the goodwill of Mr. Steve Swika, SNS is out of Scott Township. It's a local vendor, and he's been working very closely and very cooperatively with us to try to make this affordable to families, so we want to acknowledge his goodwill during those negotiations. And similarly, Montage Mountain Resort was generous enough to open its water park features and the chairlift ride to us as part of the price of admission. I mean, it's a great opportunity for the family, for $10 a person for admission. And that decision to open up the water park features has given added value to the family ticket for the fairs. So the Board wishes to acknowledge the goodwill of Mr. Charles Jefferson, and to staff at Montage, led by Mark Verastro during those negotiations. They've been terrific. The fair, of course, would not be possible without the support and encouragement of Lackawanna County and the Board of Commissioners, and also the Visitors and Conventions Bureau, which is why Kurt's here this morning. So once again, we express our gratitude to all of you for your goodwill and the assistance that you've given to the Fair Board. We're beginning this month with a vigorous media campaign to promote the fair, and we've worked diligently to put together a fair that will, we believe, celebrate the people and culture of Lackawanna County and all of northeastern Pennsylvania, for that matter. So we hope that the residents of Lackawanna and Luzerne Counties, and especially families with younger children, will come out to enjoy the fair this year and take advantage of all these features we've been able to offer, and for many more years to come. Thank you.
Great job, guys. Kurt?
Very briefly, on behalf of the, the visitor's center, and really, as a resident of Lackawanna County, I couldn't be more excited about the opportunity that this fair represents. And I think that the Fair Board and the, I can't say it enough, the experts in that room that know what they're doing putting on an event like this. We got a room filled with the best of the best, people that, that run the largest, you know, amusement ride event in Lackawanna County. That's who's dealing with these amusement rides. The people that are dealing with LaFesta are dealing with, you know, cultural food setups. People that know exactly what they're doing are in this room trying to do their best, and it's paramount that we, as residents of Lackawanna County, embrace this event, because like any event, it's going to need to grow organically, and it can become an economic driver and something that attracts a lot of people from outside the area. But it's very important in its infancy and its young stage that the people of Lackawanna County, from one end to the other, embrace this event and come check it out, because why not us? Why shouldn't Lackawanna County have an event like this? A lot of our people support county fairs all over the state. This has more than 100 vendors. This is a large event. This is not, you know, your local church picnic. This is $10, and you can have water park amenities and all the amusement rides you want. So this is a great value for the families of Lackawanna County, and two stages of entertainment, free parking. The Board has done everything they can to make this a great event that's embraceable for the people of Lackawanna County, and now we just really need the people of Lackawanna County to help us out, and come give it a chance and take a look at what we have to offer.
Great, Kurt. You know, ladies and gentlemen, I always thought, like, Wayne County, Luzerne County, Wyoming County, why not Lackawanna County? And in 2013, I brought it to the Board of Commissioners, it was 13 or beginning of 14, and I'm, I'm just thrilled that it's five years later, and we're in a situation where it's actually going to happen on Wednesday, May 29. And I can't express the gratitude, the amount of gratitude that I have for the Board. The Board was made up of people who absolutely had some kind of intricate knowledge that would contribute to making the fair great. Everybody, from LaFesta, to St. Ubaldo, to, to the, to PennDOT, to vendors, just, just an amazing amount of people. And this is all done by them free. It's a real passion.
It's been very impressive, Commissioner. I can't tell you enough of how much I've done with the people in that room.
It's a great board. It is, it's a great board, and I'd like to wish you good luck, and I'd like to please ask all of the citizens of Lackawanna County, go to our fair first. Go to our mountain first. Experience our fair. We're the first fair of the year. The weather's still nice, it's not overly hot, it isn't the middle of the summer, this isn't the middle of vacation season, it's the end of May, beginning of June, and it's a great opportunity for family, family memories to be made, and it's a great part of a quality life of Lackawanna County, and another great event like LaFesta, or the parade, or any of our other, or three-on-three, or any of our great events that are going on throughout our community yearly, St. Ubaldo, things that actually embrace what our community's about and what it strives to be. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, this was something that Commissioner O'Malley had campaigned on and is now, and comes to fruition, so I applaud your work, and I can't wait to see what you've all come up with and done, so I'll be attending. Thank you so much for all of your work, and tell the community I said thank you as well.
Commissioner Notterianni?
I'd just like to thank Kurt and Armin for their, their great work, and their entire board for what they've done, and bring on the end of May.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Armin, thank you, thank you for being the head of the board, because, you know, I mean, that's-
I thought you were going to offer condolences.
That works two ways, you know that. Congratulations. Thanks, Kurt. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay. Resolutions, 19-0099.
Thank you, Commissioner. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers from 280911 through 281318 inclusive, totaling Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $2,657,843.32, adopted at a regular meeting of the Commissioners, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 1, 2019.
Gary, everything is good?
Yes, Commissioners, all payables have been audited and approved and are in order.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to approve current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Real call.
Commissioner Notterianni?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0097.
Thank you, Commissioner. Approving the financing by the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority of certain capital projects for the benefit of Marywood University. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, approving the financing by the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority of certain capital projects for the benefit of Marywood University. A Pennsylvania not-for-profit corporation serving the public declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, and the areas served by Marywood University, to have the projects provided and financed through the authority designating the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners of the County, or in the Chairman's absence, any other member of the Board of Commissioners of the County as the person to act on behalf of the Board as the applicable elected representative within the meaning of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, authorizing such Chairman or member to take certain actions on behalf of the Board as such, applicable elected representative, and authorizing other necessary and appropriate action. Whereas the university is requesting that the authority finance a project, the 2019 project or project consisting of, among other things, all or any of the following. Number one, the acquisition, design, construction, renovation, equipping, and furnishing of all new facilities and improvements in addition to the existing facilities of the university, including but not limited to facility upgrades and energy projects consisting of boiler system replacements, decentralization of the campus, streamlined and infrastructure improvements, and various and other capital improvements to the university's existing facilities, and the acquisition of capital equipment for use in or in connection with the facilities of the university. Funding, if applicable, capitalized interest on the bor, on the bonds, and/or necessary reserves for the bonds. And, number three, financing contingencies and paying the costs and expenses incident to the insurance of the bonds. Whereas, in order to finance the project, the authority will issue one or more series in its university revenue bonds or notes, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $9 million on behalf of the university. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners of the County is the applicable elected representing of the County within the meaning of the code, and whereas, the County desires to authorize and direct its Chairman, or in the Chairman's absence, any other member of the Board to act on its behalf as such, applicable elected representative. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board as follows. Number one, in connection with the financing of the 2019 project by the authority, the Board hereby declares it to be desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the County and in the area served by the university, and the 2019 project, to have the 2019 project provided by and financed through the authority. The Board hereby empowers, authorizes, and directs its Chairman, or in his absence, any other member of the Board to execute and deliver an approvable applicable representative in the form attached here with two, then, provided that such approval shall be delivered only following a public hearing held on behalf of the County and by the authority, which is followed reasonable public notice with respect to the 2019 project described on such approval. The Board intends that this resolution and the subsequent execution and delivery of the approval of the applicable elected representative by the Chairman or any other member of the Board shall constitute the approval by a government unit required by Section 147F of the Code. The approval granted hereby shall not in any way pledge or obligate the credit or taxing power of the County, nor shall the County be liable for the payment of the principal of or interest on any obligations issued by the authority in connection with the 2019 project. This resolution shall become effective immediately. Here to speak on the resolution today is the Secretary of the University and General Counsel, Mary Teresa Gardere Patterson.
Good morning, Mary Teresa.
Good morning, Commissioner O'Malley. Good morning, Commissioners.
We're going to have you read that next time.
I was so delighted. Thank you very much. She did a fabulous job.
Great job.
I'm just thinking, legal lease read aloud is really something, isn't it? But I'm delighted to be here on behalf of Marywood University, and I have with me two of my colleagues.
Can I explain the projects a little bit so the viewing audience, like, we have an understanding, but-
Sure. With the project, we have currently a steam system which is approaching the end of its useful age of almost 25 to 30 years. It serves to provide 95% of the steam and water, and that's how we heat our buildings on our campus. So we've been looking at an energy project, and this will decentralize our system, provide us with savings, which will, in the future years, once fully installed and up and running, provide a way to pay back this loan for Marywood. The savings are substantial. We will also, the project is really, and these improvements are in line with Marywood's commitment to environmental stewardship, as you've seen in all the buildings that we have built on our campus. The project is expected to start next month, because, for the obvious reason, we don't need heat in the summer months, and also have the least impact on our students, for whom we serve, and from whom we've served for almost 100, over 100 years. In fact, this year will be our 100th year of graduations, so we're very proud.
Congratulations, that's great.
Yes. We will also, the project is really, and these improvements are in line with Marywood's commitment to environmental stewardship, as you've seen in all the buildings that we have built on our campus. The project is expected to start next month because, for the obvious reason, we don't need heat in the summer months and also have the least impact on our students for whom we serve and from whom we've served for almost 100, over 100 years. In fact, this year will be our 100th year of graduations. So we're very proud.
Congratulations. That's great.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. The project will be done over the summer months, and then it will continue, it will take a brief abatement during the fall and spring semesters and begin again next June with the target completion date of September 2020. So we are going to decentralize the steam system, putting high-energy condensing boilers in almost every building. We're going to have new hot water heaters, updating energy-efficient lighting, and doing building envelope work, which is checking windows and doors to make sure that they're sealed properly. Some of our buildings have, were built around 1950, others, like our beautiful Learning Commons, is just a few years old, so that doesn't need it. But we want every, every building to be as energy efficient as possible. So we're excited about the project, and we are most grateful to the Scranton-Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for endorsing our project, and you are the finest municipality to approve this project and the financing.
I'm amazed how much the college has grown, well, it's university too. But when I was a kid, I worked for Dixon Blacktopping, was teenagers in the summer when I'm out from school, and we did all the sealing and blacktopping and crackwork up there. And I'm amazed at all the different growth, how many different growth spurts it went through, through the last three decades. I'm amazed.
It really has, and they've always had an emphasis on the campus. And if you have an opportunity, please drive through now. It's in bloom, and it's really beautiful, and that is one of our, the hallmarks. You know, we're sponsored by the Sisters of the Make it Harder Mary, and they've been in our community since 1870. And, you know, the university has a beautiful and a very rich history of, first of all, beginning to educate minors, daughters, and they've taken that to a very advanced level. Like you mentioned, we are a university, and we do award doctoral degrees, and we have terrific majors and terrific faculty and staff, and great students.
I have a friend who's graduated, I think 1950-something, and she has, she's the epitome of Scranton, and that's our controller, Ms. Novembrino, Ms. Novembrino. And she, she always talks about how great it was to go to Marywood and what it did for her life, and she's been the controller in the city of Scranton, what, Gary, 30 years at least?
Yeah.
Roseanne's been around in the office, probably one of the longest-running office holders in the area at this point, probably 32 years, I think, complete. But she always has the fondness of Marywood because Marywood was where it started.
Yeah, and it really, the graduates go on, as you know, to impact our community in many meaningful, significant, and productive ways.
Absolutely. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Terriani?
Thank you very much, and great job, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving the financing of the Scranton-Lackawanna County Health and Welfare Authority, certain capital projects to benefit of Marywood University. I'd like to make that motion. Could I have a second?
Second.
Real call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Have a good day. 19-0098.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution opposing changes to the Medical Assistance Transportation Program. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 mandates that in any area where fixed bus route service is offered, door-to-door service to the elderly, the disabled, and other people who cannot use or access the regular bus service must be offered, and most counties in Pennsylvania are responsible for the coordination of these paratransit services, which they either provide directly to the County of Lackawanna Transit System does or through a subcontractor. And whereas, MATP provides needed transportation to the most vulnerable members of our community, which includes free trips to non-emergency medical appointments for individuals who qualify for medical transportation assistance, seniors, and persons with disabilities. And whereas, on June 22, 2018, the state legislature, in the final hours of the passage of the state budget, adopted language into the Human Services Fiscal Code HB 1677 directing the Department of Human Services to provide the Medical Assistance Transportation Program through a statewide or regional full-risk brokerage system, and the measure was approved by the Governor the same day. And whereas, the original incentive for implementing a full-risk brokerage was the promise of additional federal funding for DHS of 15 million statewide. However, additional analysis now shows the estimated cost of the Commonwealth to be significantly higher, resulting in zero savings realized and significant additional financial burden placed on P.A. taxpayers through other funding mechanisms that are already oversubscribed and adding additional layers to the delivery of MATP services and across the state. MATP funding exceeds 30% of the shared ride paratransit programs. And whereas, currently Pennsylvania functions under a coordinated system, which is a national model of efficiency and is illustrated in a recent Transportation Research Board report, which shows our state's shared ride model is the third lowest MATP cost nationally. And whereas, brokering MATP service will result in many MATP trips being removed from that coordinated system, which will increase costs overall, reduce coordination, and will result in significant loss in service productively, and reduce the geographic service area and hours of services, meaning seniors and persons with disabilities will see a reduction in available service. And whereas, in Pennsylvania, DHS primarily contracts with counties who are responsible for managing MATP and delivering services to eligible persons either directly or through subcontractors, and most counties use Pennsylvania's public shared ride transportation system to manage and deliver this service. And whereas, the move to a brokered MATP service would take away local management over MATP and transfer jobs and funding to agencies outside of the counties where the services are being provided thereby potentially during the funding over a large statewide or even international corporation which have little interest in local concerns. And whereas, independent research indicates that moving MATP from the coordinated model will likely result in the need to increase revenue from the remaining funding sources, including the MATP program, by increasing the cost to the Commonwealth by an estimated 23% or $31.5 million. And under the worst-case scenario, where local transit providers will lose all MATP trips, the Commonwealth would experience a $63.8 million increase in costs. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners do hereby oppose the changes being made to the Medical Assistance Transportation Program involving a transition to a statewide or regional full-risk brokerage system by the state legislature and the Department of Human Services. Be it further resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners will submit this resolution to the regional legislative representatives and state senators and provide copies to the State Department of Human Services and the Governor's Office in an effort to respectfully request the Administration and General Assembly take steps to suspend the award of the RFA and consider taking action to study this issue further before initiating any changes. Here to speak on this resolution is Colts Executive Director, Bob Pugh.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, and that resolution sums everything up well. But I'll just touch on a few items there. As you've heard, last June, language was placed in last minute into a fiscal funding bill that would direct the Department of Human Services to seek, to advertise a request for applications from private companies to take over and run the service of the Medical Assistance Transportation Program, or MATP. Presently, County Lackawanna Transit System provides that service, as do other counties throughout the state. So this is a statewide issue that we are all in public transit and other counties fighting. Some of the downsides of it, we're going to take that personal touch. Our drivers know our passengers very well. We take care of them. We're required to have training, drug, drug testing, et cetera. When you go with a private broker, now you're talking about a broker from outside of the state or a different part of the state. The broker's running the service, taking it out of our hands. So our most fragile riders, our citizens and seniors, will suffer from this because what it's going to do, as you said before, we do run what it's called a coordinated transportation system on the shared ride system. So on a van, when you see a smaller bus going around, people are intermingled. There's our ADA clients, there's the medical assistants, and there's our shared ride, which are seniors. Well, those all coordinated, and that's one, and that's why Pennsylvania is the fifth most efficient state in the country providing this service, and third in MATP. So what will happen specifically for Colts, if a statewide broker takes over the system, we're talking about a 30% loss in ridership on this coordinated system, which will, fares actually will be increased. There'll be less service because less people in vans, our buses, so we have to try to, there'll be less runs going. So it'll be less service, increased fares, and obviously layoffs. Now, a domino effect on that, on our fixed route side with our larger buses, we're going to have to take money from that side to balance budget, which could also result in cutbacks in fixed route service and layoffs there. So it's a negative result in the public health and the outcomes, and it's a human cost. This has been tried in several other states, and I encourage everyone to look at coltsbus.com, our website. We have a two-minute video, a very good video that explains everything. At least several other states have tried this, not working there, as the states thought they were going to save money, they're spending more money. For example, we, in our Pennsylvania Public Transportation Association, who are fighting this, we heard from experts from other states. We have this documentation. In Texas, costs increased by 400%. They didn't save money. Ridership, service complaints alone went up 300% and a 50% increase in ridership. So we're asking everyone to please contact your state representatives, contact the Governor's Office, and we're asking for a stop on this. Do not award this RFA. Please stop. Let the legislature study it before they make a decision because many of our legislators, we found out, didn't, don't understand it when they voted for it. Let's study it, then make a decision. There's two bills in the House, or one bill in the House, Representatives, Bill 986, which is co-sponsored by our local legislators, Marty Flynn, Mike Carroll, and Kyle Mullins. There's a Senate Bill 390, co-sponsored by Senator Blake and Senator Dechac. So even though they're co-sponsoring, please contact them, tell them that you support these bills, let's stop this and study it before an award is made, before we go to privatization.
We talked about this a few months ago, and then I made it to the meeting about four weeks ago, and this absolutely is putting our most vulnerable of our citizens on the line. And what scares the heck out of me the worst is, if it becomes privatized, they don't have to do background checks on who the bus drivers are. Am I right about that?
Well, you have, right. The level of expertise isn't there, training and screening the drivers is not required according to this RFA.
I'd like to say that Colts are our eyes and ears in our community. We've given them numerous awards for saving youngsters in our community that may have been out of the streets or got out of their house, and these are professional people who care about these citizens like their family, and these citizens believe that these drivers are family to them. And this would have an incredible, horrible impact on our community if for some reason coordinated transport was no longer here for them. Like my good friend Keith Williams, you know, I mean, he wouldn't be able to get around. I mean, that's what this is for. It's a service to make sure that the playing field is level for everyone. It goes back to the curb cuts that weren't in downtown Scranton in the 70s but are here now, and the elevators and the bathrooms that are accessible and everything else. These buses make life possible for citizens that aren't capable of driving vehicles, and we have to make sure that it doesn't happen. We got to make sure that our citizens get the word out, speak to the representatives, not only our representatives or our state centers, but across the Commonwealth. This really matters, and we're going to, this really matters to our community, and it matters to these citizens that don't have the opportunity to drive themselves. And these are veterans that utilize this service. These are people that have needs, that have physical problems and issues that they can't drive on their own, and our senior citizen population. And I just think that the whole thing at coordinated transport is run very well, and I think that we'd be an incredible loss to all of our citizens.
And we're a nonprofit, obviously. We don't make a profit in public transportation, but privatization, there are for-profit companies. So...
That shouldn't be a bad thing, but...
Well, one of the things that happens is...
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have interrupted you.
It's okay. If we, if there's a trip and we don't pick someone up and they're scheduled on the trip, we cannot bill for that trip. Whereas, if you're, the privatization goes through, when you have a profit company, they're getting paid X amount no matter what. And that's, you know, there are a couple of things to look at.
Those buses are all over our community all the time, all day long.
Right.
They really serve the citizens of Lackawanna County. I have Jason Kowalczkowicz here from Erie, Age in L.A. Jason, get up and just say a few words because this affects the people that Jason deal with every day, and we're here as county government to make sure that our elderly are safe and that they have opportunity to utilize the bus. Talk about it a little bit, Jason.
Just to add on what already has been said, I think that what we do, we don't realize is that our ability to solve problems locally and communicate locally issues to help our individuals will be totally eliminated by this process. So if we lose our program here in the community, the ability for my care managers and my staff to coordinate transportation with Colts quickly and easily for an individual will automatically be...
It's a tool for the toolbox for you. You're not able to do it.
Also, we will see disruption into services like dialysis and services like senior center visits. All of those things will be disrupted. We have seen the Department of Human Services make decisions like this before that have greatly impacted the lives of seniors in a negative way. When they moved the enrollment process to a private provider, we had seen seniors that were getting into skilled care facilities and getting on older adult waiver services in three weeks' time, moved to three months, to nine months, to 11 months before they were getting their services. This could have a tremendous trickle-down effect on our older adult population, and not that we want to make everyone afraid, but we want to make everybody aware that this will be beyond the control of the individuals that right now, when there's a problem, can get on the phone and solve it within a day or two. This will turn into a much bigger process where we're reaching out to a private company and going through more channels to try to solve something that we typically could have done within, within the matter of hours.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you. And one of our employees here, Bobby Walsh, who does a great job in IT. Bobby, what's your thoughts?
A year ago, I started taking the coordinated transportation because my father was recovering from a heart attack, and I felt it was time to be independent. The drivers have been very nice to me. In January, my power chair stopped working on the van. The driver called another one to help him with pushing my power chair manually from the van into my home. In November, we had a big snowstorm. The drivers shoveled the snow and made a path for me to go into because my parents cannot shovel the snow. I want to keep the coordinated transportation non-privatized. I depend on them every day.
Bobby, I'd like to thank you for coming to work every day with a smile on your face. Thank you. And it does matter. Commissioner Cummings?
This is one of the areas that I warned all of you about when I discussed priorities. If the state continues to spend taxpayer dollars on unnecessary projects or bad policy, projects like this that actually matter to the public and to all of us are going to be the areas that suffer. This is what I was talking about when I said, don't spend the money on a bike study, give it somewhere else. This is what I was talking about when $1.25 million was spent to create a state-run nurse aid registry hurting other small businesses in our state. That's your taxpayer dollars. These are the projects I talk about all the time. This is why I rail against unnecessary expenditures at the state and local levels, because this project should never be put in the private hands, never. And I say that as a private sector business owner. You know, you could talk about the layoffs and the, you know, whatever other issues you come up with, but the fact is, is that a service that's so necessary for our elderly and disabled people in our community should never be put in the hands of someone that you don't know if they're going to survive, because businesses don't survive. Not that they wouldn't be good at it. I would prefer that... don't survive. Not that they wouldn't be good at it. I would prefer that you wouldn't say businesses weren't, privatizing isn't good enough for it, but in actuality, their longevity may be what might not be there, and that's the problem. And that's why we have government services, because there is issues with longevity. They might be family-owned, the children don't take it over. There's all different kinds of issues as to why a business wouldn't survive. They, this service needs to be in government control. I am not a government person, everybody knows that, but this is one area where we cannot jeopardize the residents of our community. And I, that's exactly why I'm constantly looking at trying to prioritize expenditures. This is not an area that should ever be affected in any way, shape, or form from our state budget, local budget, or anything else. And everyone in the community knows it, and I have no idea why this was allowed to go through. It's infuriating to so many, and including myself. And I would stand by anybody that was opposing this. I want to make sure that, I do that. You know, I don't understand how this went through. To jeopardize any of our elderly or disabled residents, our veterans, is an outrage. And our taxpayers' dollars are supposed to be utilized in an appropriate manner, and prioritization is what we are elected to do to help in that area. And that is what I always try to do, and I will stand up for spending when it's appropriate every day of the week, because this is one area that cannot be cut. We must preserve it for the local county level, and I will help you in any way I can. And I thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Commissioner Terriani?
I have a hard time understanding how it could even get to this point on the state level.
Exactly.
It's absolutely ridiculous. And we just have to do what we need to do to try our best to stop it, and we're very hard to stop it. But again, I cannot possibly understand how the state can let it get to this point. Thank you.
We've been working hard, our state association across both aisles, across the whole state with our legislators, trying to educate them. Meetings, we've been in Harrisburg many times, and thank God we've got some bills out there hopefully to stop.
Yeah, great, great. Okay, let's.
This was signed off by the governor, though, already, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen of viewing audience, make your calls, talk to your senator, talk to your representatives. Go out beyond Lackawanna County. You know what I mean? This is about all of the elected officials across the Commonwealth will have a voice on this, and we have to make sure that the voice is no. That we gotta keep a stable transportation there for our most vulnerable citizens, to make sure that they're safe every day, and to feel at home when they're going to their appointments. Going to the store, going wherever, going to work. And Bobby, we'd like to thank you for going to work every day, and thank you for using coordinated transport. I'd like to make a motion opposing the changes to the Medical Assistance Transportation Program. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner, on the question, I really can't. I think we should all continue to voice this outside, write letters.
Absolutely.
This is an outrage. This is an absolute outrage.
We actually are making sure there's a letter going to just about, what do we, we're having, where's your address? We're doing a letter to just about all the representatives and senators, letting them know. Yeah, we talked to Joe Derenzio about it, so I know we're just doing it to local, but I want this to go out to everyone, and especially the governor. Call your governor. He's there. We need to stop this. We gotta make sure the most vulnerable are safe. Bridget, Bob, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, Bob, I would just ask that when you're presenting this, in order to make sure that you do have small business behind you, discuss the facts that I just talked about. Do you know what I mean? Keep it a positive message for them as well, because they're gonna understand what you're talking about, okay? I would just, because small businesses try to do everything correctly, and we try to do the right thing, but they're gonna be just as outraged at this. Everybody will be. So just, I just want to make a note of that. Thank you very much for coming in.
It will affect their businesses, because think about it, these individuals won't have the opportunity to go out and shop and be part of the community, and it's taking away from the quality of life. It's so many different things. You know, people look forward to little things in life, maybe lunch, or doing something, or going on a vacation, or just maybe going to the store, going to the dentist, or going somewhere. This keeps them in their home. They need to have the opportunity to get out, do what they feel needs to be done for themselves. And we gotta make sure they're safe. We really do, so. But it leads right into actually something else that's very, very good. 19-0100.
Thank you, Commissioner. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee. Dominic Mastree, 538 Spruce Street, Suite 402, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 1-8503, to a three-year term, to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2021.
This committee was sitting vacant for years, and this board, and I think the first or second month of our term, made sure that the Lackawanna County Disabilities Action Committee was up and running and having quarterly meetings, and we have one of the members right here, Bobby Walsh, who absolutely lets us know when there's an issue, a problem. They're in on the construction of the building, so if we built something that was wrong with it, they knew from the go that this had to be wide halls, lots of ramps, lots of opportunity, like I said, to make sure the playground is even, the playing field is even for all of us. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that Dominic Mastree of 538 Spruce Street, Suite 402, Scranton, PA, be appointed to the Lackawanna County Disabilities Action Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Proudly.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Bobby, thank you for coming, and you're very close, actually. He is right around the corner.
Yeah.
Joan Hodawanitz, 101 Penn Avenue, Scranton. Lorraine, did you watch those two movies?
I did not. I haven't had the opportunity, but I did kind of do a preview.
Before you watch them, make sure you have popcorn.
All right, well, Bobby.
They're interesting. You know, Cocaine Fiends is from 1935. It's about 62 minutes. And Reefer Madness is from 1936. That's about 65 minutes, so they're not that long.
Yeah.
They're black and white. The sound is not all that wonderful, so you probably want to be in a noiseless environment. But anybody can show you how to do it on your laptop, or, you know, as long as you have the DVD thing that you can put in.
Yeah.
Because they're digital. So they'll show up on your computer, and just like I said, make sure you have popcorn.
I will.
Maybe bring some friends, and don't charge money for it, you know.
You'll bring some gummy bears.
Gummy bears, yeah. They're very educational. Reefer Madness on marijuana, that's where the perception in the public of marijuana becoming a gateway drug originated.
Yeah.
And Cocaine Fiends, the year before, was based on the perception that it was being peddled as a headache powder. Seriously, so you have a lot of fun watching them. I think that the focus on drugs during that period kind of got put on the back burner for two reasons. One was the depression.
Yeah.
There were other issues, and then we ran into World War II.
Yeah.
And the issue didn't surface again until Vietnam, when drugs became a major issue in Army over there. But enjoy them, and you just give me a call the next time you see me. By the way, when is your next meeting on the road?
The 28th.
9th.
29th, okay.
28th. Oh, it was the 28th, but move it to 28th.
28th, okay.
Tuesday.
So that'll be a long way down. I was very impressed by your recognition of the buildup project. I personally believe that children model the behavior that they see around them. And if you build up children, if you treat them with respect and dignity and love, that's how they'll treat others. And I think this is an excellent anti-bullying tool, because I think, you know, bullying is out of control because we allow it to happen. And by treating people very well, especially when they're small children, that's how they learn to treat each other. Okay? And so I was happy to see you give them that recognition. It was well-deserved. I'm also happy to see that you addressed this COLTS issue, which I mentioned.
You were at the meeting I was at.
Yeah, and I mentioned this the last time, but you thought it was gonna be resolved, so you said.
No, 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 no. Bob told me that they were going to Harrisburg, and that he would let me know what was going on at that point. So that's why we were, because I wanted to, from the go, four or five weeks ago, to start.
Yeah, we gotta dig our heels in on this one. I remember asking about, you know, bus service to the VA Medical Center in Plains. Yes, we do have a Luzerne County bus, which comes up once in the morning and comes back once in the afternoon, but there are an awful lot of veterans in this area who do not take advantage of their entitlement to VA care because of the difficulty of getting to and from the medical center.
That is true.
Even if you had a car, you cannot find parking down there, okay, because of the number of contractors that are down there. And a lot of veterans, if you can't drop them off at the door, they're not gonna go down there and walk a block or more uphill and upstairs. They can't do it. So having dedicated, you know, transportation which takes them right to the door and picks them up from the door is essential. And I've been pushing for that, and when I asked about it at the last meeting, I was told, "We'd like to do that, but we've had to put that and other extended services on hold," you know. And what we need to do with our COLTS program is we need more routes. We need longer hours of service, not less. And right now, they can't plan for that until this gets resolved. So it's important. I also, good news from Gary, that no more legal fees, so we're on a roll. Let's keep it going. That was good news. But speaking about money, now.
Here comes the bad news, right?
Well, you've seen the articles in the paper about the delinquent taxes and garbage fees that the city's been looking into with the help of the Scranton Times Tribune, and their notorious slumlord, Larry Bond. Have you all been watching that or reading about that?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Larry Bond. I forget, what was the last county owns, like 16 properties in Scranton alone? And his delinquencies in both municipal and county total over $270,000, okay? He's a slumlord. He was part of a law group in New York City, and was recently fired, and they don't want to have anything to do with him. What was the direct quote when contacted? I can't really find it right now, but at any rate, some of his delinquencies are at the county level. Now, I haven't had time yet, but one of the things I'm gonna do is I'm gonna find out if any of his 19 properties, nine of which are condemned, have been put up with tax liens and have gone up for sheriff's sale. Here's a case where somebody should be put up for sheriff's sale, and should be put on tax liens. This guy is beyond the pale. And then I started asking myself some questions. You know, I've been a property owner since I retired in 1998 and came back, and I pay my property taxes every year. And it occurred to me, you know, when you look at the budgets, and I just looked at the last three years, '17, '18, and '19 that the county passed, and, you know, the collection rates vary from 90 to 92%.
Right.
We never get that goal of 100%. And I'm aware, and everyone else is, that there's a small percentage of people who, you know, they pass away, or, you know, they have some unplanned financial emergency, you know. Stuff does happen. I mean, it's happened to my family. But I'm not sure that it's all those people, you know, in that 10%, you know, have that excuse. I would assume that it's a very small percentage, and the rest of them are just flipping us off, okay, like Larry Bond. And so I was looking at the numbers, like for the 2019 budget, you know, we assumed a collection rate of 91%, based on the total assessed value of $1.5 billion or so. And if you look at, what's the 9% of that that we're assuming we're not going to collect? It's almost $8 million, okay? And that goes on year after year. And that's just face value. That's not interest in penalties and any of that other stuff. That's year after year after year. That adds up. And, you know, I mean, so the rest of us who do attempt to pay our taxes grudgingly, but we do pay them, you know, we're picking up the slack. And I don't mind the rare exception where somebody needs to be put on a payment plan because, you know, they've lost a job, or the house is burned down, and they've had some other act of God or unforeseen emergency that comes by. But an awful lot of people are like Larry Bond, or they simply live beyond their means. Like, how many people have you known that, you know, rack up debt on their credit cards like there's no tomorrow, and then they want to run to the bankruptcy court, you know, and get absolution? And why should I or anybody else be picking up the slack for people who, you know, live that way, or rip off the general public like slumlords? We shouldn't have to do that. So I started asking questions, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but the county does not use a collection agency, does it, to collect, to collect delinquent taxes?
No.
You don't have a third-party collection agency, like the city does. They have Northeast Revenue Service.
Internal.
Our delinquent tax office.
We have a delinquent tax.
Not that I am entirely impressed by third-party collection agencies, because, you know, they have a vested interest in, you know, dragging out the collection of delinquencies. Like, you ask Northeast Revenue on the city's side, you know, "Well, what do you do?" Well, you know, "We send them letters, and, you know, we do this, and we do that." So then why did the delinquencies for the garbage fees balloon up to $16.8 million?
That would be my question.
Well, you know, "We're working on it. We have to scrub the list, you know, and looking for..." Give me a break. You know, that's their bread and butter. The more delinquencies that they have to handle, the longer it goes on. They have an industry.
The more money they make, right.
Okay, so if we're gonna have an effort to collect delinquent taxes, I think we should be hiring people that become county employees or city employees, whatever the case may be, and we pay them, and, you know, they work directly for us and they're accountable to elected officials. That's the way I would do it if I were the queen of the universe. Another thing I did was I did a write-to-know request through Fran Pentuso, and I wanted to see, you know, how many delinquencies, and, you know, how much money, you know, in delinquencies going back to 1983. Now, you may ask, what's so important about the date 1983? Well, that's when we, you know, had the referendum created at the county library system, and that was the beginning of the library tax. Because I'll tell you, it's not just me and you getting ripped off. It's organizations like the county library system, because for everybody who fails to pay their taxes, you know, it's money that the general public voted for that doesn't go to support library operations. And I think they're important. It's just like, you know, the M A T P program, you know. This is where our money should be going, okay? But at any rate, so there's a lot of money there. Then the other thing I was talking to Fran this morning about was I'm gonna request through her as the right to know, a list of all current county employees. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna compare this list of delinquencies with the list of county employees, because I told you the last time I spoke here that, you know, anybody being paid out of taxpayer funds should be paying their fair share of taxes and fees. And if they have an issue, they go in and they say, "I need a payment plan." Anything short of that is unacceptable. It is simply unacceptable. So I think we need to be very sensitive to this issue of people who do not bear their own weight, whether it's on the Scranton School District, where they have a board member, you know, who was delinquent, and his taxes to the tune of over $20,000, or people like a slumlord, Larry Bond, you know, who, over $270,000. I mean, give me a break. And he's working in Manhattan, making good money. In fact, he got released from Manhattan, and I think he also got released for where he was teaching in law school, somewhere up in New York. So they both got rid of him within a week once they found out the story from the Times Tribune. And thank you to the Times Tribune for unearthing, you know, this issue, because I think it's important.
What was his job?
So again.
What was his job?
Say again?
What was his job?
It was, I think it was a marketing firm or what was it, Jeff?
I believe he was a senior attorney at Squire Patton Boggs Law Firm in Manhattan.
Yeah. I'm not sure what they do.
Lobbyist.
Say again?
They're lobbyists.
Lobbyists, okay?
Law firm lobbying.
But they dropped him like a hot potato. Basically, they put out a statement saying he doesn't work here anymore. And the university where he was teaching law dropped him also like a hot potato and says he doesn't teach here anymore, okay? This is just unacceptable, you know? I mean, like I said, I support, you know, a safety net for those who are, through no fault of their own, encounter a major financial disaster and need a payment plan for a short time of time. Everybody else, get in line at the cashier's cage, you know, because I don't have much sympathy for you anymore. Too many very low-income people dig down deep and pay, even though they have to, you know, do without other things that they probably need. They don't repair their homes, you know? They, you know, skimp on or refuse to go to the doctor, they won't go to the dentist. But they don't want to be embarrassed, but they'll pay their taxes. So if we're, you know, we can't have two standards. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. So enough about that for right now. When are we going to have a little charmont restaurant downstairs so I can get a cup of coffee before these meetings? When is that going to open?
I'll answer the commissioner's business.
Okey-dokey. Also, I would like to remind the public that the primaries are fast approaching. What's the date? Do you know, Lorraine? You should know.
May 1st, May 21st.
May 21st. Any of the debates that they sponsor, whether it's, you know, you go in person at the University of Scranton or it's on TV, I strongly encourage people to follow the issues and listen to the various candidates and then get off your duff and vote on May 21st. It's important, it's your civic responsibility and your duty and a lot of people fought and died for you to have that right. So go ahead and do that. And I think that's about it and I'll see you in two weeks.
I have a question for you, Joan.
Sure.
That gentleman you're talking about, what was the property taxes that he owed? What did he owe?
His total of municipal and county taxes and fees is over $270,000.
So does he have multiple properties or...
Yeah, he's got something like 19 prop, he's a slum landlord, 19 properties in Scranton alone, I believe.
And I think it was Ken Bond is his name, right? Kenneth Bond is his name.
I thought it was Larry Bond. Was it Kenneth Bond? Kenneth Bond, okay.
Well, the reason I ask is because the policy here is after two years you lose your...
Yeah, Ken Bond, Ken Bond, yeah.
After two years, you lose your property, so it can't be...
This thing going on for years and years and years and years. That's why, you know, I have no patience with this Northeast Revenue Service, that's the collection agency for the city.
Oh, that's a whole different story, yeah.
Okay, in your case, you have a tax claim bureau which has only four employees and you cannot put this burden on their shoulders alone. You are not staffed to do it. So you are either going to have to increase your staff if you want to pursue delinquencies or you're going to have to hire a third-party firm.
I don't know that there's a problem with delinquencies. Is there a problem with delinquencies?
Don't know. We're going to find out, okay? On Friday, I'm going to go to IT.
Well, you could find out reading the paper. They have the names in the paper every time somebody's late, every, you know, they do that every year.
Well, those are just the sheriff's sales you're looking at, okay? You're just looking at sheriff's sales.
Right, because that's two years late. After two years, they get put in the paper and they get sent in for a sale, yes.
Well, there is a whole lot of...
They lose their house. I mean, how much more do you want them to lose? Their job, their house, everything?
Hey!
If they lose their house, they lose their house after two years.
Well, a lot of people don't worry about the liens, because nobody wants to buy their properties, they're in such bad shape and they're not intending to sell, you know, they're just squatting there almost. What I would do, among other things, if somebody has, you know, no excuse for not paying their taxes, you know, they simply are trying to beat the system, the first thing I would do is I'd report them to all the credit bureaus. Let's see how they like losing their credit rating.
We got to wrap this up.
Start with that. I don't know anybody who's doing that, okay? Because tax liens don't worry a lot of people. They've been going on for years. Some of those people have been carrying tax liens for years and years. And then the question becomes if somebody's delinquent for more than two years, why hasn't a tax lien been enacted?
Because they lost their house.
Doesn't appear to be automatic.
Because they should have lost their house after two years.
They should have, but it doesn't, that's another thing that some should look into.
The collection agents in Scranton should do their job. That's what they should do.
Well, that's true. But the point is, aren't tax liens done at the county level?
They lose their house.
Aren't they, aren't tax liens done at the county level?
No, no, they lose their house. They lose their property. After two years, they lose their property.
Under Pennsylvania law, a tax lien is automatically applied when the taxes go out. You don't need to file a separate lien. It is a lien on the property.
Well...
So you don't have to file a separate lien.
Well, how can people be going 10 or 20 years with delinquent taxes and they still have the property?
I don't know that, I mean, if that's what you're finding that's true, then we have an issue. That's what I'm asking. Is it over two years? Because otherwise, we actually have a process here, so we, you know, I'm not sure how that list works.
I'm not sure...
As it works here, after two years, it's put up for tax sale, yeah. And then judicial sale.
Right, that's the process.
If it doesn't sell, there are a few properties where it can't be sold and nobody wants to buy it and then it goes into the repository list.
But the person lost the house.
Correct, they lose property.
It's not like, you know...
Mr. Bond didn't lose all his property.
That's what I'm asking, like...
I'm not sure what his situation is, but I know he owes...
$270,000 isn't a lot of money for 19 properties, is what I'm saying.
He owes garbage fees and multiple fees and taxes and all kind of stuff.
So that's not just all county, that $270,000?
No, the school district, municipal, and county.
That's what I'm saying. Right, like the county is probably...
I think the one article said that he owes about $32,000 in county taxes.
Is that one year, two years?
I'm not sure.
It's got to be, I'm hoping, if it's more than two years, then that's a problem for us.
Correct.
But the man's collecting rent, he's got renters in those buildings, in some of them.
Some of them I think he's abandoned. Some of them have been condemned and they're abandoned, so he's probably not paying at all on them and they're probably being put up for sheriff's sale or if they haven't been, they'll be put up for tax sale.
So, but the point is, the point is, we do have people who are working the system, okay?
Sure we do.
And, you know, and we've got to put an end to this, because, you know, like, for people who've been living here and own properties for 50 or 60 years, that adds up by them having to pick up the slack. And really, you know, somebody needs to take a hard look at it and see what we can do to make sure we care for the people who have a legitimate issue, have fallen on hard times. We don't just throw them under the bus. But for the others who are just taking advantage of it like they do in Scranton where nothing happens to you if you don't pay your garbage fee, you know?
Scranton just fixes that problem, yeah.
We've got to put an end to that, you know, just in principle. I'm sorry.
That's not us, though, that's Scranton.
Taxes are the price we pay for civilization. And if you don't like it, move to Canada. Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Fran, Elena Roberts is having an event I had talked to. Did they send the information on their event they're having on May 3rd for our website for the Conservation Board?
No, they're not yet.
Tracy, can you pull something up online? I thought she said that they had something up on the... What, Mike? You have it?
No, I just had something I wanted to address to the board when you're ready.
Sure. Oh, geez, I didn't know. Okay, go ahead. Armin, you can get, you're under visiting allegations.
I'm wearing a different hat this time.
I'm here to address the board as president of the Bar Association, Lackawanna Bar Association. Today, May 1 is Law Day throughout the United States. Law Day was originally the idea of President Dwight Eisenhower's legal counsel, a fellow by the name of Hicks Epton, who in 1957, 58, was also serving as president of the American Bar Association. And he discussed with the president at that time the concept of designating a day to celebrate the rule of law. President Eisenhower proclaimed May 1, 1958, as the first Law Day in the United States and that was later made a public law on April 7, 1961, but we've been celebrating Law Day since 1958. President Eisenhower at that time stated, "In a very real sense, the world no longer has a choice between force and law. If civilization is to survive, it must choose the rule of law." So consequently, the American and the Pennsylvania and the Lackawanna Bar Associations use Law Day as an educational tool, particularly for students. And the theme of this year's Law Day is Free Speech, Free Press, Free Society. The Bar Association will conduct its annual Law Day program on this Friday, May 3, here in the first-floor lobby of the County Government Center. And I'm here to thank the Board of Commissioners for allowing us to use this facility for that purpose. And we're inviting you and other state and local government officials to attend our Law Day program and to honor the recipient of our 2019 Community Service Award, which is Dressed for Success Lackawanna County.
Nice, that's a very good organization.
And we are also honoring Holy Cross High School's mock trial team, which was our Northeast Regional Champion, not only this year but last year. This year, they went on to become the State Champion Mock Trial Team. And later this month, they will be participating in the National Mock Trial Championship Finals in Athens, Georgia. The Bar Association and the Bar Association's Foundation have contributed $1,500 to the mock trial team in order to help them to defray some of those expenses and we're going to honor them and the runner-up Scranton Prep this Friday. So we want to extend to you an invitation to participate in those ceremonies so that you have a chance to honor Dressed for Success and also the two mock trial teams.
What time is it?
I think it's scheduled to start, the presentation is scheduled to start at noon. We have some things warming up at 11:30, but around noon is when the presentation will begin in the first-floor lobby.
Nice.
Thank you very much.
Good job, thanks, Armin. You got many hats.
Yeah.
Too many. Commissioner Cummings?
Sorry, I'm trying to pull up that information for Conservation District. I thought they sent something over already. On May 3rd, can we get something, we'll give them a call, Jerry, and get it put up on our website so that people know. They're going to be planting some trees, I believe it's with Lackawanna County Heritage Valley. And we should be able to coordinate with them so that we can get something up on our website. I want to make sure that they're recognized for the work they're doing. And Elena Roberts from PP&L is going to be working on that. So just want to make sure that that's done. And as far as COLTS, I mean, we've said all we can say on that, I think. I'd like to thank, you know, the commissioners for having the victims of crime, you know, come in for Marcy's lie. I'm shocked, I can't believe that this is for me. So thank you very much for allowing that.
Very nice.
And, you know, just continue to fight to stop problems that are happening in funding. And like I said, you've just got to prioritize their funding priorities. That's the biggest thing that we do up here, is prioritize what we're going to do with the money from the county and make sure that it goes to the better good of society. That can't be provided by society, even with the Wi-Fi program. My argument was that, you know, the cable companies can provide that and they felt it couldn't, so they passed it here. Now, that's just a disagreement on what their priority is and mine. But we're talking about coordinated transportation for elderly and disabled. There can't be any ifs, ands, or buts about that. It has to be provided by a stable entity. It just has to be.
Absolutely.
And that just cannot be a part of, you know, I would just hope that we can keep that worded so that it's not offending any business owners, because I think you can get the small business owners on your side with that, you don't, you know, to say that their criminal backgrounds and all that. I just, just be careful with the way that we're wording that so that you can get more advocates for that, because I know it's doable. I'm a small business owner and, you know, we're concerned about people in our community and especially myself with the business that I have. So I appreciate the fact that they brought that to our attention and good job on his part for bringing that to our attention. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Commissioner O'Neal, any?
No, I have no further commissioner's business.
I would just like to just remind everyone that starting May 29th, that will be the first day for the First Annual Lackawanna County Fair on Montage Mountain, very close, very accessible. Like a lot of other fairs, you'd have to travel outside the community and this will give you an opportunity to go to a great fair and see the great start of great quality of life fund throughout the fair for that, those so many days that will be up on Montage Mountain. It's going to be a great week and you can't beat the ticket price, the free rides, the water park, I mean, for $10, that is amazing. And I'm hoping that we have lots of families out there. It's very affordable, it's a great opportunity and it's good to invest in Lackawanna County and our fair, I think, is a great investment for our citizens. Also, I'd like to wish everyone, because we're going to, we won't be having a meeting till after Memorial Day, so I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe Memorial Day. And please, remember there's a lot of veterans, there's a lot of events going on celebrating Memorial Day. Remember our veterans, our servicemen and women that are fighting on our behalf every day, so we have the ability to have these meetings and have a free country. And, you know, America is a great place to live and we have great servicemen and women that are sacrificing and defending us every day. And Memorial Day and all the great events that go on this weekend is a great time to remember all those that gave so much, including their lives. So please make sure if you can get out to an event or two that Monday on Memorial Day, that would be great. Also that weekend, another great event that's going on is Saint Ubaldo Day, the Race of the Saints up in Jessup. Please make sure you get up, you can see Saint Ubaldo, Saint George, Saint Anthony. This is another great, Jesus, actually, it's a five-day week. It's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, yeah, it's five days and including, they actually did the expo into Monday with events going on up in Jessup, the Jessup area.